I would now call it June 15, 2015, Blue Springs City Council Meeting to order. If you would, stand with me, observe a moment of silence, and then I will lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. I want to welcome you in attendance, as well as those that might listen to the audio at a later time, to tonight's City Council meeting. Next on the agenda is the consent. Are there items that need to be pulled, if not accepted motion for approval?
So moved.
Sir, second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Quebel.
Aye.
Councilman LaVissay.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edminton.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Next, we have a presentation by Stand Up Blue Springs with the Board President, Dave Wilson. Welcome, Dave.
Thank you. As Mayor Ross said, thank you. I'm Dave Wilson. I'm president of the Board of Stand Up Blue Springs. Many of you may know, quick background for them, but they have done the Dental for Kids program for many years, and they partner with the city on all of the Let's Move activities, Let's Move Saturdays, and all of that. What you may be less familiar with is some of the challenges that we face as a nonprofit, which is to, one, remain visible in the community, that's always a challenge, to remain relevant to the community, which is also a challenge, and then to maintain a sustainable business model, which, for any nonprofit, is a challenge, as funds have increasingly dried up. So we've been doing some strategic planning for the last year and a half or so, and have implemented a couple of strategies. The first was an organizational facelift, so we have a lot of new blood, new board members. We have people that represent the banking industry, people that represent the school district, corporate America. My background is marketing. I come from an ad agency background, so it was time for a facelift there. The second thing that we did is, we need to deliver solutions that are valued by the community. No brainer there, so what you have to do is go out and find out what the community needs. And so we did that by implementing a community survey in April of last year. So we distributed cards through major retailers, got them in the hands of residents, and the card invited them to go online and take a 12-question survey. It was designed specifically to identify the attitudes and perceptions of area residents, so a variety of questions, from lifestyle to what they thought of the city, et cetera. We wanted to also then rank factors that were important to them. Why are they satisfied with Blue Springs, or not satisfied, as the case may be? And then, real important for us was to determine if there was any unmet needs. So that was going to be our opening, if that was the case. As far as survey findings, this is not on topic, but I thought this question, I'd throw it out, might be interesting to you. One of the questions was, in your opinion, what should be the top three priorities by city leaders? Any guesses? There was, of course, the predictable fix our potholes and our public service improvement there. But the one that kind of surprised me was, it said, "Prepare Blue Springs for the future." Thought that was interesting, no charge for that. I don't know what that means, but it was kind of an interesting one. As far as Stand Up Blue Springs goes, there was two key findings that gave us direction for the topic tonight. The first was an employment program concept. What we did was develop a couple of concepts to see what they thought about it. This one I'll read real quickly, question 10. In your opinion, how important is a proposed new employment program designed to help Blue Springs residents find a job? This privately funded program will include counselors who will evaluate a person's work readiness and discuss skills needed to be successful in the workplace, counselors who would teach people how to look for and apply for jobs, including the use of computers in the process, counselors who would teach people how to communicate, both verbal and written, throughout the job search process, including the interview follow-up, and finally, counselors who will provide ongoing support even after job placement, as required by each individual, to help maintain employment and to advance in your job. This was, as you can tell, high priority by 63 percent of the people, moderate priority by 35 percent, so it was at over 88 percent thought that that was a very high priority. So that was finding number one, that kind of gave us some direction. The second one here is teaching life skills to young people was seen as being really important. 50 percent said that was essential, and a little over 27 percent said that was very important. So those things gave us some initial direction. And then after that, we looked into it further, both locally and nationally, to discover the depth of the problem. And so we have developed a program we're calling Game Plan for Life. Now, Game Plan for Life is essentially an employment program for youth in Blue Springs and the surrounding area. Now, there's a lot of programs for those who are college-bound, but none that we know of, or very few that we know of, for those that are not college-bound. And these young people do not know what they want to do. They don't have a career. They don't know how to find a job. And in many cases, they don't even have the life skills to go about doing it. I know that many of you have run into examples in your own personal life, and I know I have in corporate life, too. Sam Gilkey, one of our board members who works for the school district, said that he had a job fair not long ago, and a lot of the students, especially the boys, would come in there, look like they just got out of bed. One of them had a T-shirt on, it was torn, and had a giant marijuana leaf on it. So I'm sure the employers were fighting over him. I had another friend who got a resume recently, and it was on colored paper, and it was, there was glitter on the designs on the border over that one. I personally got one, that's been a couple of years ago, and it had an objective on the resume, and the objective was, and I quote, "I would like to work for a company that is very lax when it comes to tardiness." So these are just some silly examples, but I'm sure if you're around students, you know that many of them are just not ready for life, and they don't have a prayer of going out, don't even know how to start to get a job. So our program, the Game Plan for Life, does the following in overview. Candidates will be identified by the school district primarily and referred to Stand Up. They will receive an orientation, and they will be assigned a coach or a mentor for one-on-one mentoring. Participants will be able to identify their interests, they'll learn how and where to look for jobs. We're going to have some corporate sponsors who will be able to provide some things like job shadowing, internships, mock interviews, inside track on jobs whenever they have them, and things like that. It'll be a six-week program, twice a year. Just real quickly, and we'll go into depth, but the curriculum involves a job aptitude testing to help them identify their interests, career exploration, goal-setting, networking, how to do that, professionalism, meet their coach who then mentors them along the way, all things preparation and communication, both verbal and in-person, help them understand how to conduct a job search, get them some job shadowing so they can actually go into a real workplace, experience that. Things like punctuality and attitude and appearance, and the importance of that, first impressions, how helpful or damaging they can be, and of course, life skills and other things that are important to success, and this will kind of vary based on the individual. Now, as far as the funding for this, it's going to be a combination of grants, corporate sponsorships, and individual donations. We have invested in a pretty sophisticated foundation search tool, and we're just gearing up for that now. We're pretty confident that there's money out there to help non-college-bound students find work. So, I'm not here asking for money. What do I want? Actually, we're just now spreading the word. So what we want is, if you are a business owner, so either in your city life or in your business life, you might consider becoming a sponsor. We have a formal sponsor program. If you have some experience and the desire to help train and guide youth, we're actively looking for coaches. No long-term commitment there, and if you agree with the program's mission, consider a donation. In closing, the program is in final development. We're finishing our workshops. There's going to be a series of those that cover all the topics that are relevant for the students. We're tweaking curriculum. We're securing the presenters and coaches. We'll actually have a beta test next month, so we've got some students who are going to test this with and learn, adjust from there. The actual program dates will be November, December of this year, and it'll be followed by April and May of next year, and then November, December, so it'll be twice a year, six-week sessions. We also plan to kick off early next year, to make a lot of noise then, and we hope that you guys can stay abreast of our development. And I thank you for your time. We've got some handouts, if that's okay. Celinda Ramsey, who's the program manager with Stand Up, will pass those out, and I'll entertain a question, if anybody's got any.
Were there any questions from the council?
We appreciate you coming, Dave, and would you have all the members associated with Stand Up, Stand Up?
Yes, sir.
And thank you for being here.
Thank you.
And I believe to answer one of your questions that came up is city leaders preparing for the future. Their Truman Heartland Community Foundation has undertaken a study on that, and one of the things it revealed is, we are in eastern Jackson County communities, we have an aging population. And one of the things that I appreciate about Blue Springs, finally, is we're not the city, but people within the city are addressing that with the new era senior living off Adams Air Parkway, which we're very proud to have, and also there is a ribbon cutting, I believe, this Friday for Benton House on Jefferson. And I'm sure you're probably going to see even more opportunities for those. You know, I think there are two major components. Preparing for the baby boomers, who are now getting to be, if they're not already seniors, and also millennials. I think those are the two areas that most cities are going to have to focus on, and how do we provide? And ironically, both the needs are probably very similar for both groups. And so certainly, we are looking at those things, we're addressing those from an eastern Jackson County standpoint, and trying to prepare for that. So I appreciate your presentation.
My mom is moving into the Parkway on July 2nd.
All right.
Nice place.
Crandrick, congratulations. Next, we have a public hearing on Target Time Defense Redevelopment Corporation. Cheryl.
Yes. Mayor, the city has the following exhibit to enter into the record. Exhibit number one, City Council Information Form dated June 12, 2015, from Adam Norris, Deputy City Administrator, with notice of public hearing mailed to taxing jurisdictions on June 4, 2015, and proposed ordinance with redevelopment plan and 353 contract attached as exhibits. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Thank you. On behalf of the city, Mr. Chris Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council. For the record, my name's Chris Williams, Special Legal Counsel to the city on this matter. Office address is 400 Southwest Longview Boulevard, Suite 210, Lee Summit, Missouri. This agenda item in the public hearing is for an application for approval of a Chapter 353 property tax abatement for a proposed indoor shooting range and firearms store that will be located at the former All-American Fitness Facility on the South Outer Road. The applicant is Target Time Redevelopment Corporation. Target Time has submitted a redevelopment plan that includes a blight study demonstrating the existence of blighted conditions on the property. Redevelopment plan describes the site improvement work, removal of a swimming pool, and renovation to the existing building on the property to eliminate the blighted conditions and construct the project. Under Chapter 353, as I think many of you know, real property taxes can be abated for up to 25 years. Target Time's redevelopment plan proposes a 10-year property tax abatement on the increase in real estate taxes associated with the improvements to the property that they will construct. It specifically provides that the amount of real estate taxes that were paid in the calendar year prior to whenever they complete the project, which is supposed to be by the end of this year, those will continue to be paid to all the taxing districts. For example, the tax bill for 2014 for that property was $14,952, so that would continue to be paid throughout the time period. What that means is, even with the proposed property tax abatement, the taxing districts are going to continue to receive what they receive now, at least that same amount. In fact, they'll actually receive more during the 10-year period. The reason they'll receive more is because they will receive personal property taxes, will receive all of those. Those are not affected by the Chapter 353. They'll receive all of the personal property taxes on furnishings and equipment that goes along with this project. There's projections of the tax revenues that would be generated with and without the project and with the proposed tax abatement that are in the tax impact analysis that's included in your packet that's required by Chapter 353. One correction I want to note on the council information form, the second paragraph under the Background Justification Section states that payments in lieu of taxes over the 10-year abatement period are estimated at $204,598. It actually should say estimated at $150,000. We inadvertently used the total from the tax impact analysis, which is correct for that document, but that also factors in the personal property taxes. We weren't trying to show that. And it also included the total for the first year when they paid full taxes, there is no abatement. So the amount in the council information form should be $150,000. But in any event, what this means is that strictly from a real estate tax standpoint, the estimated total amount of abated taxes over the 10-year period is $304,470. However, this is partially offset by the payments in lieu of taxes that I mentioned earlier, so that everybody continues to get the same amount of tax revenues they're getting now, all the taxing districts. That's about $150,000, as I said, means the net total amount of real estate tax abatement that the applicant will realize over the 10-year period, using, these are all based on projections, of course. The net amount will be approximately $155,000 over a 10-year period. That's the amount that's abated, and not made up through pilot payments. Chapter 353 requires that notice be provided to the taxing districts that are affected by the proposed abatement, and that a public hearing be held in the plan. The notice must include a tax impact analysis showing the impact of the proposed tax abatement on the taxing districts. These notices and the tax impact analysis I previously mentioned were provided to the taxing districts for the public hearing this evening. Now, after the public hearing, the next item on your agenda is an ordinance that would approve the redevelopment plan, and it would also approve a Chapter 353 contract between the applicant and the city. The 353 contract requires, basically, the applicant to implement the redevelopment plan in order to receive the tax abatement. It includes specific terms regarding the pilots' payments I mentioned earlier, to make sure the taxing districts continue to get the same amount that they're getting now. It also requires the applicant to make an investment of at least $900,000 on the project to complete the project by the fourth quarter of this year, and to create and maintain new jobs, seven new jobs in the first year, a minimum of eight new jobs in years two and three, and then 10 new jobs from years five through 10. Now, those aren't cumulative, I mean, that's just the running total of jobs, ultimately 10 new jobs at a minimum. I think they're actually projecting more than that, but that's what they're obligated at a minimum to create. If the applicant fails to comply with these requirements and all the other requirements in the agreement, the city council has the right to terminate the tax abatement after providing notice and an opportunity to cure. In other words, an opportunity for them to fix whatever the problem is. The ordinance makes approval of the redevelopment plan, conditioned on the 353 contract being signed, of course, along with a requirement that the applicant and the city administrator enter into a memorandum of understanding regarding use of the facility for training of law enforcement personnel, which was referenced in the redevelopment plan. The redevelopment plan has a statement that says, "One of the benefits of the project is that it will provide a facility that the city and the school district's law enforcement personnel could use for training purposes." The MOU will spell out the terms of this use of the facility to be mutually agreed upon by the parties. So after reviewing the application, working with the applicant on this project over the past several months, and I'm speaking on behalf of staff here, the staff team, we believe that sufficient information's been provided to demonstrate that the property is blighted pursuant to Chapter 353, and that tax abatement is needed to clear the blight and redevelop the property as proposed in the redevelopment plan. With that, I would be happy to address any questions you may have, I believe the applicant's here.
Are there any questions? Mr. Williams from the council. Seeing none, thank you, Chris. On behalf of the applicant, Ms. Allen Gardner, are you?
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Allen Gardner. I'm an attorney in private practice and independence. I represent the applicant, who is present, TJ Nygro and his wife Dana. Again, I think Chris has covered the project very well. We're prepared to answer any questions the council has. We're prepared to work out the details of the MOU with both the city and the school district, should this be approved. Again, we think it's, when operational, there are some benefits beyond just the economics in terms of logistics to the city and the school district to have a facility like this in the community. I think the, if you're familiar with the property, the need for this to make the project viable is pretty clear. With that, I will be happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions from the council? Mr. Gardner? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Nygro, would you like to make any comments?
No, I'm just answering.
Okay, all right, thank you. Is there anyone in the ordinance who'd like to speak in support of? In support of? In opposition to? In opposition to? Before we close this public hearing, I will comment that City Administrator Johnson and I toured the Lee Summit new state-of-the-art public safety police training facility two months ago, on April 13th, and came away so impressed with what they've done, and it was multi-million dollar operation that they did, and I don't remember the exact number, Eric. But anyway, what I'm impressed with, not only for our police department, but also for the school district, public safety officers, is they will have an opportunity to not have to just rely on going to an outdoor range. I really appreciate what Sugar Creek has done, allowing us to use that, and I'm sure we will continue to use that. But when inclement weather conditions exist, it would be nice to have an indoor facility for our police officers to train, because we want our officers to be the best-trained that you could possibly have. So that being said, I will close the public hearing. And I would like to introduce.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill Number 4372, An Ordnance Approving the Target Time Defense Redevelopment Corporation Redevelopment Plan and the 353 Contract Between the City of Blue Springs, Missouri and Target Time Defense Redevelopment Corporation, and Authorizing the City Administrator to Execute the Contract.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, same side.
Second reading of Bill Number 4372, An Ordnance Approving the Target Time Defense Redevelopment Corporation Redevelopment Plan and the 353 Contract Between the City of Blue Springs, Missouri and Target Time Defense Redevelopment Corporation, and Authorizing the City Administrator to Execute the Contract.
Move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman LaVissay.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edminton.
Aye.
Councilman Quebel.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Councilman Culpepper, I apologize.
Aye.
Councilman Quebel.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given an ordinance number 4372.
Next, we have a public hearing on the Capital Improvement Program, continued from the June 1, 2015 council meeting.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibit to enter into the record. City Council Information Form dated June 12, 2015, from Scott Allen, Director of Community Development. PowerPoint presentation slides for June 15, 2015 council meeting. Public Notice of Hearing submitted to the examiner and published on May 16, 2015, and proposed ordinance with the 2015-16 through 2020/21 CIP. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Mr. Holly, on behalf of the city?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This presentation tonight, again, is on the 2015-2016 to 2020-2021 Capital Improvement Program, and shown in this particular slide is an aerial view of our public safety building as it moves forward with the construction. So I'd like to start by thanking our review committee members, Mayor Councilmember Carter and LaVissay and Culpepper. Thank you for your time, it's much appreciated. Also acknowledge and thank our planning commissioners, Ken Phillips Jr. and Travis Graham, and Parks Commissioner George DeBert, and as well as staff, does a yeoman's job with the review committee, as well as the CIP document as a whole. The CIP is being submitted in accordance with the city charter. The projects and budget are consistent with past CIP budgets and directives provided by the city council. Changed this year, in years past, we have categorized projects only by funded and unfunded projects. This year, we thought that the story may be better told if we were to use these categories, noted maintenance, equipment replacement, and capital improvement. We have also noted that projects, whether they are funded or not funded, but this way it gives you an idea, really, of where our capital improvement program is at this point in time. The majority, excuse me, the majority of funded projects do provide maintenance and rehabilitation and equipment replacement. I don't think that's a surprise to anyone who's looked at our budget in the last few Total budget for all projects included in the six-year period is $105.7 million, that includes the funded and the unfunded. It represents a decrease this year of about $73 million, and that's primarily due to a couple of things. The Tri-County Water Project was $21 million last year. That, of course, is a project that is now moving forward. And then we also went through the unfunded, the list of unfunded projects as well. Many of those were removed, particularly with respect to Parks and Recreation, pending the completion of the Parks and Recreation Open Space and Master Plan. Once that plan is completed, that will allow us to have better defined projects that really need to go back into the CIP, as well as possibly some new projects that we hadn't had in the CIP in the past, so that's where that difference really comes in. There's a nice graphic here that gives you a real quick breakdown of the projects. We have a total of 82, 19 of which are funded projects, 63 unfunded, and percentages are up there, and costs associated also up there. I won't go over them, but I think you see it. I will say that the percent, the percent cost there of 29 percent, as relates to last year, is about 27, so we really run about the same year after year. Certainly true this year as well. Projects proposed to be funded for the 2015-2016 budget year, total approximately $4.87 million, and it represents about 16 percent of the total funded projects for the six-year This graphic gives you an idea of the breakdown of our projects. As you can see, we have street maintenance covering a good deal of our budget, 55 percent, I believe it is. It's a little tough to read up there from over here, but I have it here, and it is 55 percent. Sanitary sewer and utility, again, 22 percent. Water utility, 19 percent, and then you can get an idea from the others, the public safety, parks, information technology, community development. Buildings and facilities make up the rest of the budget.
Sign the appropriate ordinance number.
A second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call please.
Councilman Carter?
Hi.
Councilman Edmondson?
Hi.
Councilman Culpepper?
Hi.
Councilman Kowell?
Hi.
Councilman Levesey?
Hi.
Mayor Ross?
Hi.
Councilman Fowler, I'm sorry.
Hi.
I apologize. Carried unanimously, given ordinance number forty-five, forty-seven.
Thank you. Next, we have a discussion of twenty-fifteen, twenty-sixteen CDBG annual action plan. Mr. Allen.
Thank you. Thank you, Honored Members of Council. Before you tonight is our third opportunity to have a discussion on the draft annual action plan for CBG fiscal year twenty-fifteen, twenty-sixteen. We've had a lot of good discussion in the last two city council meetings, and now we're moving forward with the formal publication of the draft plan for its thirty-day comment period. So before you tonight is a resolution to move forward with that publication of the draft plan, which again would open that up for thirty-day public comment. And we're scheduling that for publication this Saturday, June twentieth, and would close then July twentieth. Come back before you on August third to, again, address any comments that have been made during that time, and then formally adopt the, again, still technically a draft annual action plan, but our final, I guess, wrap-up of the plan before we submit it to HUD for their review by the deadline of August fifteenth. So with that, again, staff has kind of distilled a lot of the discussion down to six separate programs or projects. I think without much conversation or concern, we've been moving forward with both the minor home repair program and the first-time home buyers program. Staff is moving forward with minor home repair program, looking at sixty thousand, which is approximately twenty percent of the total, two-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand-eight-hundred-and-two, which by the way is about ten-thousand-five-hundred dollars less than what we could have for this current year, just to kind of, for those of you who are kind of tracking kind of ebb and flow of HUD funding over the years. So it's a little bit higher than what we were normally looking at, fifty thousand, but are, again, seeing a lot of good response with that. Want to kind of match up dollar figures as well as it relates to that CD-oh-three, as you just talked about, with the current CIP. So that's a part of that number, and again, looking at, moving forward with sixty thousand, which could be up to twelve different, or approximately twelve different properties at five thousand dollars each. First-time home buyers programs maintain that at thirteen thousand, excuse me, thirteen applicants, three thousand dollar maximum for thirty-nine thousand dollar total, about eighteen percent of the total, two-hundred-and-seventy thousand. Downtown facade grant program, we talked some different numbers last city council meetings. We are looking at approximate ten thousand dollars of carryover funds that we could add to what we're proposing, at twenty thousand dollars for this upcoming annual action plan. So could be up to thirty thousand dollars available for that. The reason for that, we are looking at some programmatic modifications that could be made during the, in the upcoming year, based on some additional review of public input, for example, possibly expanding geographically the boundaries of the programs, allowing additional applicants to kind of jump into the pool there to access those funds. Downtown Live maintain that level of ten thousand dollars to, again, city's financial commitment to that group and the work they're doing, concert with a lot of projects and programs that the city is overseeing. And then looking at Summit Street sidewalks, we talked about sidewalks, always like to see opportunities for sidewalk installation, reconstruction and such. And Summit Street, again, we've made some good connections with Friendship Manor in terms of connecting, physically connecting them over to Vesper, and then Vesper down to Seven Highway, so accessing all those businesses on Vesper, particularly Quick Trip, saw a number of folks utilizing that again even just today. I know staff use it as well, going from City Hall down to Vesper, you can probably see me doing that sometimes as well. And now looking at do, making that same kind of connection back essentially to the other side of Quick Trip, down Summit, for all those residents there between City Hall and Vesper, and making some connections back to Seven Highway. So that's about a hundred-and-ninety thousand dollar project. Could look at breaking it up into four different phases, looking at about forty thousand dollars for this first phase. And finally, looking at kind of the balance of the dollar amount, it's, it looks like an unusual number, forty-thousand-eight-hundred-and-two dollars, simply kind of the leftovers, so to speak, but looking at possibly some property acquisition or demolition that falls under the category of slum and blight removal, something we haven't really discussed in too great a detail in the previous discussions here, but something we have not necessarily, certainly identified specific properties, but looking possibly could fit within the MCR-C three-fifty-three boundaries, since that already has an existing blight study that's been done, already identified that whole boundary as opportunity for removing and improving blighted areas. So something to think about, again, this is a draft plan, but that's kind of the, kind of one component that it fits within that downtown improvement, I guess, proposal with CD-oh-three, again, looking back at the CIP, trying to connect these two documents as well, a little bit more specifically this time around. And again, really does look at the downtown area, but there's some opportunity there for some slum and blight removal with HUD, there are a lot of restrictions that go with that, as we even identified all the minutia that may be involved, but did want to identify that as something a little bit new that we didn't really specifically address in previous meetings. With that, I know Councilman Levesey brought up Wi-Fi previously. Staff has, has done some preliminary research, were able to drill down and get some kind of more like monthly costs, haven't identified all the upfront costs per se, but still waiting to hear back from our representatives here, both in Kansas City office, they kind of deferred it over to DC, the main headquarters for HUD, as to whether that would be applicable. So kind of blazing a new trail with that type of project, not something that's necessarily on their checklist for something that we could just go out and do. So don't want to ignore that, but kind of at this stage, want to defer that till we get some additional information from both HUD, and then also our further research in terms of costs, both upfront costs and then kind of long-term maintenance costs with that. Again, just want to reemphasize as well, it's noted in the council information form that annual action plan is consistent with that CD-oh-three project, again, especially as it relates to the facade grant, Summit Street sidewalks, and then that property acquisition, demolition component. So with that, also don't want to discount the fact that previously with the current annual action plan in this current fiscal year, we also do have two additional subrecipients beyond just Downtown Live, we have Community Services League and Hope House. They have not been identified for funding based on your input and direction at this point. Again, really focusing, as you saw, again, that CIP, going back to CD-oh-three project, really the infrastructure side of things, and focus on downtown, and less so specifically on subrecipients and how the social programs or projects as well. So don't want to discount the fact that they were receiving some funds, they also provided some information in the council packet, again, letters that were handed out the last meeting, again stating the value that they provide to the community, which is certainly without question, and, but again, at this point, we've not presented the draft annual action plan in its current format with funding them in mind. So with that, again, this is just a publication of the draft plan, so there's opportunity here over the next four to five weeks to make modifications, I guess, receive any additional direction, comments you may have, and will at least look forward to coming back on August third. So with that, all standing ovation.
Your Honor, I just, I wanted to make an additional statement on the Wi-Fi work that you all are doing. The National League of Cities Technology and Communications Committee that I sit on is studying and looking at the need to transition from plain old telephone service to, to Internet connectivity as a basic vital service, much like telephone service itself was treated back in the nineteen twenties, I think, is the timeframe, before everybody had a telephone in their house. I would hope that HUD would maybe take that into consideration and say, look at this, is this is a rapidly becoming a basic service that provides access to everybody, to the Internet, and something I hope we'll be able to figure out a way to provide.
Thank you, Councilman. We certainly will continue pressing HUD and trying to get some additional information out of them. We'll certainly let you know as soon as we hear something from them. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilman Levesey?
Mr. Allen, just a couple of quick questions. That property acquisitions, demolition, is that a program that would be used citywide similar to the minor home repair, or is that something specifically for the identified HUD district?
Good question. As we're proposing it here, it would specifically target, I guess, downtown areas, primarily because, as I noted, the MCR-C, that area, that district, already has a blight study done. Certainly wouldn't preclude other areas of the city, but there'd be additional legwork that would be required to kind of bring it to the level.
Develop some sort of official program to make it work?
Yeah, there would have to be exactly additional blight studies, similar to what we already did to set up the MCR-C district. We'd have to do almost to that level in other areas of the city, but that's certainly, certainly something for consideration, but as we're proposing it now, it would really focus on downtown.
Okay. And the other thing with, does the CD-oh-three and the CIP, does that essentially create a mechanism to avoid, you know, to keep our ducks in a row, to avoid losing funding like we did a few years ago? Is that kind of the mechanism by which to do that? Is that why that was created, or is it just?
Pull it, Deputy Administrator Norris, respond to that perhaps?
I think the tie was simply because those are, those are capital-related in nature. We wanted to reflect those projects in the CIP to make sure they're accurately reflected.
Okay.
It's not necessarily a requirement of HUD or anything else, it's a tracking and transparency mechanism that we thought was appropriate and necessary.
Okay.
I know kind of the concept was to roll those into, and long-term projects, so we have something always in the hoppers, we don't lose track of our funding, so, all right, thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Your Honor, to further on Councilman Levesey's question, with item number six in the CIF that talks about property acquisition and demolition, you know, that would, there's a lot that goes into that, because, one, we would have to identify properties that would qualify and that would help us advance strategic agenda for a particular area. In the event that we are not successful in doing that, we wouldn't want this forty-eight thousand to be at risk. Therefore, we would, if, if we weren't able to execute on that point of the plan, we would direct additional funding to the Summit Street sidewalk, which the budget in that case is one-hundred-and-ninety thousand to finish that. So that would be sort of our Plan B and contingency, so that we wouldn't lose any CDBG funding.
So that's what CD-oh-three does, is creates?
Helps to that.
Help us in, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, or Mr. Allen? Councilman Fowler?
Yeah. So the property acquisition and demolition, there is no plan then? I mean, I don't hear any, any property that we're going to be acquiring or demolishing.
We don't want to be discussing the acquisition of that in an open session. There, I mean, we've identified properties in-house that could potentially fit for some redevelopment, long-term plans, but those haven't been brought to you. So this is, you could say, this is, this is a concept proposal tonight.
Okay, and the city would own that property?
Yes, sir. The city would own it, with the anticipation of handing that over for redevelopment, future development, or it could, it could even sit as a pocket park temporarily while it's being marketed for, for development. This could be a, this could also be applied to homes, you know, private residence, not just commercial property in the district, where it could be a property that's for sale, could be, could be raised, and then a, an updated home could be, could be constructed in its place.
Okay. Be nice to find out some definition of that. Is there some reason you can't share that with the council?
I think this would take a point of being premature to do it.
Well, I think we've been discussing this now for many meetings, this is the first time we've brought it up. The concept?
The, the concept was, was presented at the last preliminary, when, when the action plan was, was presented, it was, it was in that, those list of recommendations. We, there are some properties, as, as Mr. Johnson alluded to, that could be potential sites, but discussing real estate transactions in an open session probably is not advisable.
I appreciate that. I know that we left this meeting last time with a, with a vision of looking at for, you know, Internet access, and I thought that was a good concept, so I guess I'd like to know more about that. I would think that we should pursue that.
And as the, as reflected in the CIF, if, as we get those costs put together, and as we get some direction and clarity from HUD, we can certainly amend this plan at any, at any point in time. There are certainly operating costs, equipment costs associated with that program, that if HUD were to authorize the initial part of this program, they would not support ongoing operating costs, equipment replacement costs. So there, there would be an expense that would, the city would have to absorb at some point in time, outside of CDBG funding.
And then you mentioned there was no funding for Community Services League, Hope House this year?
Correct.
I guess, you know, when I look at the downtown facade program, I know that that money has also went to private property, where those private property owners are already getting tax abatement, you know? I look at this money as coming down to us from the federal government to help low and moderate income families, and I'm seeing it go into already tax-abated properties owned by profit-making businesses. I say that twenty thousand dollars could be split to the Community Services League and Hope House, going into low and moderate income families versus going to already tax-abated property for profit-making businesses. So I'd like to see that happen.
Any other comments, Councilman?
I want to go back to property acquisition and demolition. Without getting into specific properties, are we talking about condemnation and eminent domain?
No, sir.
Well, you said city ownership of, of the property.
Ultimately, if we would, if we identify a property and the council would, would authorize us to enter into a negotiation to acquire a property, it would be through a market process. It would not be a, I don't envision, or we don't envision that being a condemnation at this point. If there's a property being marketed, then, then we may, we may pursue that.
Okay.
Or if someone would approach us, we may, we may entertain that discussion.
Okay, thanks.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Just a couple of points to maybe kind of circle back here. This is, ultimately, this is council's decision on how you allocate these, these resources. This item on property acquisition and demolition is, is really being proposed at this point in time as a strategy to further downtown redevelopment and activity. That's consistent with the boundaries of the three-fifty-three MCR-C that's been established, as Mr. Allen indicated. However, if there's a, a level of uncertainty or discomfort with how that strategy might be implemented, we can certainly put this, you can put this money elsewhere, and as I indicated, we can, we can move off of this, we can spend some additional time coming back and having discussions without binding the council or putting you or down a pathway that you're not comfortable with. We can come into an executive session, we can put maps up, and we can begin to identify strategically things that might fit with your long-term goals for, for downtown. And as indicated, the sidewalk for Summit is a good place where if you want to take that money and move it, or as Councilman Fowler has indicated, a couple of other options. We're not, we're not stuck on this, is what I'm saying.
Councilman Levesey?
There are several meetings I think we'll have before the actual action plan gets approved. Is it appropriate to maybe just have an executive session to where we can address this more in detail, and then we can always amend it before the actual action plan is approved ultimately? If that's acceptable?
That's certainly possible. Again, yeah, good question, good point, Councilman Levesey, in terms of the fact that this is just a draft action plan at this point, the idea is exactly what we're talking about, within the next thirty days, to have additional dialogue if necessary, receive additional public comment as it comes in to modify what you see before you here tonight.
We're not having a July sixth council meeting, so then the next one is the?
Twentieth.
Twentieth. Is that when we approve the final plan, or is it not until August?
August third. So yes, there's opportunity for one additional.
Maybe on the twentieth, we could do an executive session.
Well, even if you set, even if you put that amount in it, any deals or any properties that would be acquired is going to have to come to this body in an executive session, because when we talk about market-driven, you start talking about it publicly, it's going to be driven, it's going to be driven up. So we will discuss that in executive session. Any other comments or questions?
Your Honor, if I may, again, Mike Peterman was, again, been instrumental in putting this together as well. He did a lot of research on the Wi-Fi part of things, as well as Dan Hood helping out to put some of that information together, just to get us moving along that path. There's always opportunity again as well, even if we kind of set this as it is, for example, on August third, you know, mid-year like we did with Hope House and CSL, to have an amendment to the action plan. Again, there's a kind of a little bit longer drawn-up process with that, but it's an opportunity to, again, revisit some of these projects should there be some fluctuation in priorities, even mid-year. Also wanted to, if Mr. Peterman is comfortable mentioning, the property acquisition, demolition and such, the, the purpose with that is to benefit low to moderate income residents and such. It's not simply just a city to, you know, wipe clean a property. It is to benefit either an area or a group of individuals. Some examples have been purchasing a dilapidated building, turning it into, you know, culinary institute for low to moderate income students. You know, that's not, that's just as an example. So the idea is to, to further some goal that's in our consolidated plan, that's why we emphasize the downtown part, aspect of it, and then also emphasize the low to moderate income aspect of it. And that's where HUD always has to kind of go back and look at their task, kind of where their direction, and always with, in mind, keeping in mind the fact that we are looking at low to moderate income residents and how we serve them, as Councilman Fowler has mentioned as well. So, is there anything else to add to that?
I remember you and I have a discussion that even if you have a property and it's developed, you don't just turn it loose for profit. There's tracking that you have to establish, that you are using this property for low to moderate income benefits. Even if you build a house there, you still have to prove it's being beneficial to that demographic.
Exactly. It is, it is a unique aspect of kind of redevelopment. It's not just, you know, anything can go in there. There is, there's a specific focus on that low to moderate income benefit, so.
So along with this, there was a program during the housing crisis, and it was called the Neighborhood Stabilization Program. It was very, it was separate from CDBG and Home and other programs HUD runs, and it was for this specific process. Cities, communities were, got this money to purchase homes that were sitting vacant, or businesses that were sitting vacant, to redevelop them. So that program has expired, but they still have this acquisition and demolition project available in CDBG, so cities and communities can continue that type of work. But again, like Councilman Levesey said, there's a lot of conditions to go along with it, to prove that you're benefiting low and income persons, so that's all.
Anyone else?
Nope, that's all. Again, just, and thank you, Mr. Norris, as well, for helping kind of frame up a lot of this. Again, that property acquisition, demolition, it's not too well in that, but was in that list, I recall, and we had ten or twelve items, but now we're actually identifying, you kind of bring me in the bones, we have some dollar numbers and some more specifics to that. So that's why I may have mentioned it's, it's new, but it's new in the fact that we didn't really have any numbers associated with it last time. So we have some more specifics here for each of these different programs, and again, open to any other directions or modifications here tonight before we move ahead with publishing the draft here for this Saturday.
I do have a question for you. I know in last year's appropriation to the two social services programs, we had asked that you, they come back with a report on outcomes. Do we have that?
Uh, no, because, Your Honor, we are, because that was mid-year and the process that was involved with that, we are still finalizing their contracts and getting them their money. So they have not had an opportunity to actually utilize the funds that we've.
So that particular money hasn't even been appropriated yet, then?
Correct.
Okay. So we're asking for additional appropriations when the first appropriation hadn't been done?
Correct. Again, because it's a mid-year process, if you recall, it was, wasn't until, I believe, March before that was all kind of wrapped up. So we're still finalizing their contracts to issue the checks to them here shortly.
If I may, sir, the, when the agreements are finalized, they will include criteria and performance metrics that will be able to be reported on, and they will be required to report on those.
Good, okay.
And they referenced those, if I may, Your Honor, they referenced those similar performance measures they had in other communities in the letters that they submitted as part of the council information form here tonight.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
Yes, Your Honor. So that appropriations, it's not gone out yet for the current year, I guess?
Correct.
But it's gone out to other entities, like Downtown Live?
Do they have those? I, I believe so, only because, again, they were identified earlier in the process in terms of the initial annual action plan back last October. But since there was a modification to include CSL and Hope House, and the extensive process through HUD to have that adopted, that wasn't finalized, I think, until March of this year. And now we're going through, again, just finalizing their contracts with the new contract process right now.
Yet they've, they are sent letters to us requesting to be included, I guess, right?
Correct.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none? Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone like to make a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the publication of the draft twenty-fifteen, twenty-sixteen CDBG annual action plan?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Yeah, discussion, yeah, I thought, go ahead. Back up on the ayes and let's have a difference.
Yeah, the, with the one-year strategy here, I see it outlaid there. I did have a concern with the Downtown Facade program. Profit-making businesses, they have the opportunity to go after three-fifty-three's. We saw one approved tonight for many thousands of dollars in tax abatement. I don't see the same thing for low to income families. They can come and ask for grants, but that's about it, they don't really get tax abatements. I'm in support of the Downtown Facade, the twenty thousand dollars being allocated to the CSL and the Hope House, equally ten thousand dollars each, so I'll make that amendment to Resolution fifty-dash-twenty-fifteen, that the Downtown Facade program, twenty thousand dollars be allocated equally to the Hope House and the CSL.
That is the motion? Is there a second? Is there a second? Seeing nine, dies for lack of a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Same sign?
Aye.
One descending vote. Okay, that brings the mayoral announcements. Before we meet again, on July twentieth, the July sixth council meeting has been canceled. But before that is the Fourth of July celebration at PV Stadium. On the Fourth of July, it's a great activity, it's a great event, and I would encourage all to come out and participate in that. Give you an opportunity to be able to watch some very nice fireworks that's done safely from the stands, so you can sit there and enjoy it. Matter of fact, it's become a competitive thing for me, because I watch other people shooting off from a distance, and I always think ours is better. Surprise, surprise. But anyway, that's an event that we open up to our citizens to come out and enjoy, and also there are authorized firework tents that you'll see throughout the city, and we encourage people to observe the rules of keeping it clean, keeping it safe during this time period, and obey the rules. That brings me to House DePanda. That brings me to thoughts of the pundit tonight, doesn't have an Arthur, but it said, "If you don't believe in quality, you'll never produce it," end quote. I do have one visitor appearance form from Lynn Rose.
My name is Lynn Rose. I'm Vice President of Community Services League, so I want to start by thanking you, Mayor, and council members for the funding that Community Services has received in the CDVG current program FY 1415. I have a little thing prepared here, but I'd like to address some of the questions or comments that we just heard related to the current CDVG allocations. From CSL's perspective, once we received notification that that funding was coming, we began working toward the goal that we stated we were going to. So, beginning October 2014, knowing that that funding was, was coming to us, we opened our community, our Blue Springs office one additional day per week. We opened from two to now three days, and that has allowed us, since that time, to increase our direct assistance to clients by over 13%, which, you know, equates to more families remaining stably housed, people are not going to bed hungry, they're cool in the summer and warm in the winter. So, we are boots-on-the-ground service organizations, and even though we haven't gotten the check, we understand it is in the mail. So, again, on, on faith, we went ahead and began to provide that extra level of service in the Blue Springs area. So, I think in our letter, I'm not going to go back through some facts and figures, but the letter that we did provide as a letter of intent, so to speak, we outlined some numbers, if you're interested and you need some light bedtime reading, you can look at that. So, after reviewing the programs and the projects that are in the CDVG draft recommendations, clearly they are very worthy and important initiatives that we, that we as an organization who cares about this community would fully support. However, I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't directly ask you to consider including Community Services League or including allocating, an allocation for public services to continue in the FY 1516 program. However, regardless, Community Services League is dedicated to this community. We truly appreciate your support in a lot of things we do, not just through the CDVG program. We feel that this city is an, is an amazing partner for us, and so we thank you for your consideration, we thank you for your current funding, and I thank you for your time.
I have a question for you. You do maintain a registry of who your clientele is?
Oh, 100%. We, I'm not sure if you're familiar with a program called MAC Link, it's Mid-America Assistance Coalition?
Yeah, I'm familiar with it.
And literally every single action that we provide is placed in this database, and it does a couple of things. One, we can query that data to provide any number you want, how much money we've spent, how many clients, how many times they've returned to us. But it also, it allows us to electronically communicate with other service providers so that, again, we're not duplicating services, and we can make sure that clients aren't going from here to here to here.
Right.
You know, we're maximizing your funding, other people's fundings, we're being a good steward to our funding.
And the majority of those clients are Blue Springs residents?
Every single penny that is awarded to CSL from CDVG is spent in, in Blue Springs. So, all of our clients have to provide proof of residence when they come, and that's all kept in files. So, we really look forward to coming to you at the end of our reporting period, which would be October 1st, give or take, and we can give you specific details, more than you will ever want. That's, that's kind of my job, so we look forward to being able to do that.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Rose, appreciate your, your letter. I do have in front of me, I just want to highlight some of the things that you did put in there, some of the numerics. Over the past 12 months, CSL has served 1,860 unique individuals and 619 unique households in Blue Springs. We provided over 69,000 in food, 5,500 non-emergency medical services, $15,000 in utility assistance, and $10,000 in rental assistance. So, I applaud your efforts and appreciate you working with our community.
Thank you. If I could just add one last thing, we have a fairly robust fundraising program, so when you give us money and you want it spent in Blue Springs, 100%, but we're also bringing in money from other federal contracts, state, and that's also coming to this community. So, you know, we're committed.
Well, I know one of your biggest advocates is Melody Christman, who is out ill right now, but probably be returning soon.
She plans to return next month, and we cannot wait.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
You bet. I don't have any other visitor's appearance forms. We have a motion that's going to present, be presented to you by our city attorney, Ms. Yendis, and then we'll just need someone to say, "So moved."
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, an appropriate motion would be, "I move that this body go into closed session pursuant to Section 610.021, Subparagraph 2 of the Revised Statutes of Missouri, for the purpose of having confidential and privileged communications relating to real estate transactions, when the public knowledge of same may affect the legal consideration thereof, that the records and any votes taken during such session be closed until such time is required by law to be made open, and that this body stand adjourned at the end of such session."
So moved. Is there a second? Roll call, please.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Koval?
Aye.
Councilman Lovise?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
We're going to take about a two or three-minute recess to allow visitors to be excused, and then we will go into executive session.